Welcome, everybody, to the 6:00 PM City Council meeting. Welcome. We have all council members present. And joining us online, we have Councilmember Graff. Want to say hello, Councilmember Graff?
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you. And Councilmember Myers is here. He should be joining us shortly as well. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. And Vice Chair White, if you wouldn't mind, leading us in that pledge.
Please stand. You are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll first have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Do we have any acknowledgements from the council?
I can give one.
Okay. We can always count on.
Yeah, it's not an acknowledgement, per se, but it is Suicide Awareness Month, and there's a lot of resources out there in social media, other sites, this month, to really help the community consider, you know, learning more about this issue in our community. It definitely impacts a lot of us, and there's a lot of resources. So number one is to really learn that it's okay to ask people if they seem to be having a hard time. You know, sometimes you might shy away from asking them, are you thinking about harming yourself? Are you thinking, do you have a plan for doing these things? This is actually a really effective way to get a person talking about and understanding the kind of risk level of that person. So anyway, there's a lot of resources online, and I would highly encourage everyone to look into that because it's, you know, it is a preventable situation that we're in. And so this whole month, that will be out there a lot. So please check out, check out the resources.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Up next, we have approval of minutes from the joint work session of July 30th, 2024. Councilmember Blair.
Yes, thank you. I have reviewed those minutes and found them to be accurate.
And the special meeting of July 30th, 2024.
Mr. Chair Ritchie, I have reviewed those and found them to be accurate, to the best of my recollection, and would make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
The motion by Councilmember Hare and a second by Councilmember Blair to approve the minutes. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That passes. We have a request to be on the agenda, so welcome Bob Hunter from United Way to come on up and address the council on this issue. Welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the council, and your honor. I'm practicing up on how to approach dignitaries. And, you know, in case I get the Nobel Prize, I'll know how to address it when I get to Norway. So tonight, I had intended to bring the new homeless coordinator for Weber Morgan, but he worked with us for two weeks and started to put together the plan. And then he was hired away, and he's now on his way to Indiana to run the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saint Social Services for the state of Indiana. And we've got to find a new homeless coordinator. But Janine suggested that I come anyway and just give you a very brief update on what's going on. So, and I will, I'll be brief. We're in the process of hiring a new homeless coordinator. And in case you don't understand the process, the homeless coordinator reports to the local homeless council, which serves Weber and Morgan Counties. But the person is hired by and employed by United Way of Northern Utah, and the funds come from the state through the county to pay for that position. And we're looking forward to whoever comes on next. And there's a movement across America. It's called Built for Zero. In Utah, they've just decided to call it End Homelessness. And Built for Zero has this goal, to make homelessness rare and brief. It's never going to be completely gone, but there's a lot more we can do that hasn't been done to this point. Thank you, Ogden City and Ogden City Police Chief for Anna Davidson, who is, I consider her to be an earth angel. She's just doing a yeoman's job in terms of helping to mitigate homelessness and deal with those issues out there. Beyond that, we'll have some other people to help. But here's the idea, that if you learn the names of the homeless, you will know what their issues are, and you'll know how to help them. We have an organization in Weber County that does that. Councilmember Myers and I are on the board of PAGE, Problems Anonymous Action Group. And those are people who are generally, would be homeless if we weren't housing them. And sometimes addiction is involved in the mental illness as well. Let me tell you a brief story on why knowing their names is so important. So Jamie Ramboz, who is the Associate Executive Director over at PAGE, also works sometimes at the Davis Behavioral Center in the evenings. And one evening, there was a lady in the parking lot who was making a commotion and threatening suicide and that sort of thing. It was just a big mess. And they ran in and found Jamie, and they said, Jamie, could you go out and see what you can do about the issue? And he went outside, and here was this woman. She saw them coming, and she jumped out of her car. And she said, I hate you. I'm going to go commit suicide. And she started running across the street. Jamie had remembered her from a year earlier at PAGE. And he said, Monica. And she stopped. And she turned around and she said, how do you know my name? I don't know you. And he said, yeah, you do. You think about it. I'm with PAGE. He said, now, sit down, and let's figure out what we need to do to help you. That is what comes when we know the names of the homeless. We then know their needs. We know how to help them, how to support them. And that will be our goal here in Weber County. So there will come a time, as soon as we get our new person hired, that you'll get a more thorough report on what's happening and that sort of thing. But I thought I'd take advantage of this evening to just come and give you an update on that. So if you don't have any questions, I'm going to take off my tie, and I'm going to go to the Raptors game. Now Glenn and I, you know, you're the one that told me I'd feel good about hosting, so it's all your fault that I'm doing that. Glenn and I host, is this your second or your third year? Glenn's family hosts one of the two best players on the team, and I hosted the other one. And so, was it Sunday night that he made two home runs? And the night before that, my player made one homerun. And, you know, we hear talk about these players, that they're just a bunch of jocks. They're not at all. They have their degrees. Jack has his degree in IT. My player has his degree in sports management with a minor in criminal justice. And they have very solid lives and plans for their future in case they don't make it to the major league. You know, they've got their lives planned out very well. We're fortunate to have them in Ogden, and we appreciate the fact that we have the Raptors here in Ogden. You should know that we're online for being the number-one attendance record in the entire Pioneer League for the 27th year in a row. Boise is right behind us, but they've never quite, you know, come up to our level on the attendance. And that's what it means to our community to have that program here. And just appreciate all the things you do for our community in the arts, in the outdoor recreation, and keeping the city going the way you have. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Does anybody have any questions or comments or anything at this time for Bob? If not, yeah, I'm glad you're hosting a player. It's a great opportunity.
Do you need to know anything about the Raptors or anything like that? They were the champions in 2023. They won't be in the playoffs this year, but, you know, there's always a year you can make a comeback. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. All right. Up next, we have from our, a report from Planning Commission, Barton Breerly, here to address us on the Proposery Zone.
Good evening, Chair Ritchie and city councillors. So this is a request from the property owner for a zone change from AC, which is Airport Commercial, to Flex, which is a flexible industrial, kind of a mix between a commercial and an industrial zone. So the property we're talking about is at 4336-1650 West. It's just adjacent to the Kemp Air Park. It's just south of the Ogden Airport. Here's a kind of a blown-up picture to show where the location is. This is a picture of the site. You can see it's vacant. It's been vacant for quite some time. Here's just to the east, which is the Ogden Gateway Center. And it fronts on 4400 South. And I show this picture so you can see the kind of development on 4400 South. It is residential. On the other side of 4400 South, it's actually in Roy. And all the homes are faced inward, so they don't have access to 4400 South. They have fences, and they're backing up to the street. So the current zoning, as I mentioned, is Airport Commercial. To the north, the airport is Airport Industrial. It's a business park in the Roy end. To the west and to the south, it's a Roy Single Family Zone. The applicant would like to use this space for, this piece of property, for Flex Industrial, which, this is a concept of what that might look like. This is not their picture. This is just something I found online of what a typical Flex Industrial space is, where you create a building, you create individual spaces. People can rent one or two or three spaces. And they might use it for a variety of different uses. Might be a plumbing contractor uses one. Somebody who does flooring might have, store their flooring there.
Barton, can you just pause for one minute? We have a report that they can't hear you online. So let's see if we can, we can get that fixed or looked at here. Dave, can you, if you can hear, go ahead. I think we're all connected, right, these microphones? So if you can hear me, Dave, maybe raise your hand or...
Yeah, I hear you all. It's back.
It's back. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is my microphone?
Good.
Yeah, I think you're okay. Yep.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I hear you, Barton.
Okay, great. So again, this is the type of project the landowner would like to use for the property. And when the property owner came in, they've actually tried to use it for airport commercial uses. I think it's safe to say if they had somebody online that wanted to use it for one of the uses that's allowed in airport commercial, they would have used it already. So it's a, the airport commercial allows a variety of uses, but they're really focused on connections to the airport. So you can do a restaurant aircraft repair, but you can't do other sort of vehicle repair. You can sell aircraft fuel, but not other kinds. Warehouse is really limited to, is really limited on it. Repair types, uses, if you're doing aircraft use, you can do it, but other, you can't. So they've had difficulty finding tenants, finding uses for it. And so they approached us with, can we broaden out the zone and the types of uses so we can do this sort of Flex Industrial project there? So we ultimately concluded that this would need to create a new zone, which is, we don't have, which is this Flex Industrial Zone. So this came to the council. The council adopted it. And so now they're applying to change the zone of the property to this new Flex Industrial Zone. So we looked at the zone change guidelines from the general plan. They look at what the surrounding neighborhood is. Does this fit in with the surrounding neighborhood? Are there good buffers between uses and edge between it? Does it fit the prevailing character? And, or does it isolate neighborhoods? And then these, this is why, again, I showed that picture of 4400 South, that it is adjacent to a residential area, but really 4400 South is a very definite border between the airport and airport-related uses and the residential areas. So it does fit on the north end more of this Flex Industrial type of character. So Planning Commission recommended that it met those criteria. The criteria also look at what are the commercial needs in the area? You ought to see if there's enough of that kind of land. And it's like, as I noted in my presentation, if they had good users that could use the airport commercial zone, I'm sure they would have used it, but they just haven't found that market. It's kind of a niche market that there just aren't a whole lot of uses out there. So this would broaden the kinds of uses they could do on the property. Another one is zoning boundaries should not cross individual lots or developments. And in this case, this is one big property, and so including the Kemp Centers all in one lot. So they would need to subdivide that. They've actually applied for that. There's going to be a consideration of that next week on that. So that would meet that. So the Planning Commission recommends that this meets the zone change criteria of the general plan, and they recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Barton at this point?
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick questions. I'm just looking at Google Earth. Do you know, somebody, do you know what they're putting in on the corner there at 1700 West and 4400 South? It looks like pickleball courts is what I'm asking, why I'm asking.
I do not.
On that property?
I guess it's secondary to my question, actually. My first question is, is do we own that road? Or does Roy, do, does Roy?
It is Roy.
It's Roy. And are there standards built to our standards? Meaning, if we have more capacity going down that road, is that going to create more issues for Roy?
I don't anticipate that. It is developed. And you see, it's developed with curb gutter and sidewalk. It's to the width that we would anticipate would handle the traffic there. So...
If trucks were going down there, light duty trucks, or whatever. Okay.
Okay. Chair?
Yes. One of the things that you, you know, you covered all the checkpoints that I think are listed in our ordinance. But one of the things that I think that we ought to be reviewing is making sure that it is not going to be an issue with height or pinching on a runway protection zone, any anticipated future requirement the FAA might put on us, you know, things of that nature. I think we have looked at that, and we've brought it up in work sessions and whatnot. But I think it ought to be stated for the record that you've kind of looked at all that stuff, and we're good.
Yes, we are good. So there are height limits that apply when you're in this area. And so any development will have to meet those height limits and should be able to do that without any issues. And plus, when we looked at the zoning, we looked carefully at the types of uses. For example, you can't do one that would emit a lot of smoke or vapors or things like that, which might interfere with the airport. And those were specifically not included. We specifically excluded any sort of use that might have a large gathering. You can't have a stadium here. You can't have big classrooms or stuff like that because those are frowned upon near an airport. So all those were baked into the...
And they can't sell aircraft fuel and things of that nature. It's, so it wouldn't compete with the use at the airport directly.
Yes, correct.
But at their facility next door, it could because it's in the AC, right?
Right.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. At this time, we'll take public input on this item. So if you'd like to address the council on this item, please step to the podium and state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes. And if you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hand. Looks like we have one online. Go ahead. We'll go here first. Let's go online first. Okay. Got to get the screens organized here. So give us one second.
He's the petitioner right here.
Hey there. Heath Sotto, Ogden resident. I just wanted to state my support for this. That kind of space can be very tricky for small businesses to find. I know I've done it myself quite a while ago, but that sort of space is very valuable for small businesses, and I support it. That's it.
Thank you, Heath. Welcome.
My name's Jake Jackson. I am with the petitioning group, the Kemp's. I think to further answer your question, Councilmember Hare, so when we do a development next to an airport, we have to submit for FAA approval prior to, FAA rules the skies, right? And so we have to submit for both the building and the crane because the cranes, if it's a tilt-up building, are depending on the type of construction. And so just to put you at ease, we do have to submit for FAA approval crane and building before, usually in jurisdictions, before building permit. But also, I think we do it as a landlord to make them not tear our building down after we build it. And that's the goal. So anyways, just to answer your question, but I appreciate everybody listening to this. I know it's been a long time running. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, hold tight. And we'll, yeah, if there's anyone else and wants to address the council on this issue, we'll go to you. And I apologize, should have had you as the petitioner take some time. But let's see if there are any other comments first, and then we'll invite you back up. Okay, not seen any other comments. Welcome back. Is there anything else you'd like to share with the council as the petitioner?
No, I think I'm good unless there's questions from the council.
Any questions for Jake from the council?
Thank you.
I don't think so. All right. Any other discussion prior to a motion on this?
Chair, if I might, just say a word or two before I make a motion. This petitioner has owned that property for a while and has had some pretty good things potentially happening there. But, you know, I personally believe that they ought to be able to use their property if, you know, that's kind of a property rights thing in my mind. But I also have a little bit of a conflict that, you know, it's so adjacent to the airport that we've got to be really careful to make sure that the uses that we do let them do are appropriate as an airport neighbor. And, you know, they, we've worked long and hard through this. This Flex Zone, I think, has probably got some real potential for our city, other places as well as this. And it might be kind of fun to see how we get to use this zone in the future. But unless there's something else, I want to make a motion.
Councilmember Trabberka, did you have a comment?
I was just going to ditto what he said. Yeah, so go ahead and make the motion.
All right.
So Chair, I would make a motion then that we adopt Ordinance 2024-26.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Hare and a second by Councilmember Myers to adopt proposed Ordinance 2024-26, and this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Trabberka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye.
Chair Ritchie?
Aye, and that passes. All right. Thank you very much. And I know this has been a long time coming, a lot of work going into this on both sides. So appreciate everyone's work and diligence to get this through. So...
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay. Up next, we have some new business. This is Proposed Amendments to the Council Rules and Norms. We invite Steve Burton, our senior policy analyst, up to address the council on this item.
Good evening, council. It's good to be with you. I've prepared just a few short slides to describe what this draft amendment is to the rules and norms and how the process that went about drafting it. So I'll first start out with the timeline of events. So beginning in January of this year, there was a council member initiative to have the council look at drafting or considering some kind of a code of conduct specifically for the city council. That happened in January. Both the initiative and the work session did. After, as a result of that work session, the council expressed interest in forming a committee to draft some kind of a code of conduct for the city council and to bounce ideas off each other as to how that might look. And then in March and April, the committee met a few times to discuss how that would look. What ended up happening was the committee, which, let me back up a little bit. The committee consisted of three council members and some council staff, as well as representatives from the legal department. Where we met, the committee met and discussed how that would look. Some members of the committee wanted to see it as a completely separate document from the rules and norms, and some wanted to see what it might look, what it might look like as an amendment to the rules and norms, the council's rules and norms. A few weeks ago, there was another work session where that was discussed, where we looked at, should it be, in the rules and norms, should it be its own separate document? And the council discussed content as well of what that code of conduct would look like. And then it brings us to this evening where you're considering looking at a code of conduct and putting that in the rules and norms. So just to provide you with some context, a code of conduct, when we initially met in work session in January, we looked at a code of conduct from another city, some other cities. In Utah, we looked at Salt Lakes. They had established a code of conduct for their city council fairly recently. And some of the other resources we looked at, we looked at some other cities that have codes of conduct, some other city councils that have codes of conduct. And what we found is basically a code of conduct is going to describe council member conduct in various settings, and that in doing so, it can be a resource for council members who may have questions on how they should be acting in different situations. A code of conduct can also set expectations and be a standard for anybody who reads it or who watches in on council meetings or observes the city council anyway. I mentioned some of the resources the committee looked at were other cities from Utah that had written codes of conduct for their city council. The direction that the council members that were on the committee provided were, if the council is going to look at, if Ogden City Council is going to look at doing their own, we want to make it our own. We don't want to just copy and paste from another city. We also looked at a few different cities and other states nearby to see what kind of documents they had drafted. And then the Utah League of Cities and Towns also has a resource for drafting a code of conduct that was used. So this slide will tell you, basically, there are four sections of the code of conduct that was written, the draft that you're considering. And that is council member conduct in public meetings, council member conduct with city staff, council member conduct while traveling on city business, and then the last one being council member conduct in unofficial settings. At the work session a few weeks ago, the council expressed interest in looking at, instead of having it be its own separate document, actually amending the rules and norms. So what I've got here on the screen is what that actually looks like. It is, you can see, it's only a few paragraphs. It actually fits on one page here. I've also got it on some other slides, if you'd like to look at the specifics of those four different settings. And I can just kind of run through those slides really quick here. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Thank you, Steve, for all that work and for the committee members who spent some time going through this. I know I wasn't here at the last work session where this was discussed a little more fully. But I feel like what we've come up with, what we've ended with is a good product for what we were hoping to accomplish, where we're not currently dealing with any major issues as a council and just, you know, wanting to, you know, maybe establish some things or that. So I feel like this helps us with that. Any other comments?
I would just thank Steve and Janine and everyone for, I had some questions about it, and they were very nice. And yeah, I agree. I think what we have now is very good and serves the purpose that we're looking for. we're looking for.
Yeah.
Comment?
Yes, please. I really like the code of conduct that you, that we have set forth. We've been very inclusive with council members and with staff in setting that forward, so kudos to you, Steve, and others who've worked on that. We've worked it through the legal process with the city administration. But what I really like about it is this code of conduct sets a standard of excellence and expectations for members of our city council, both when we're in sessions, when we're not in sessions, anytime we represent the city, or clearly we need to state when we represent the city or when we represent our own personal interests outside of city meetings. And we're talking about this political entity of Ogden City. So I think it protects the city. I think it gives us a standard of excellence. But the most important thing to me that I think this code of conduct does is it sets a, it helps us to be proactive so that we have a, again, that standard of excellence for us as city council members, that we know what our expectations are. And if there ever does arise a situation where there is inappropriate conduct, we've already got the document prepared. We've already got the standards set as far as conduct of our city council and the expectations that we have of each other because we control this document. And so I just support that. I think it's a good idea. And with your permission, Mr. Chair, I'd like to go ahead and propose that we approve this amendment to the city council rules and norms.
So propose to adopt the resolution?
What else I got?
All right, we have a motion to adopt resolution 2024-9 with a second by Councilmember Myers and a second by Councilmember Hare. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Trabberka.
Aye.
Councilmember Graff.
Aye.
Councilmember Hare.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Blair.
Aye.
Vice Chair White.
Aye.
Chair Ritchie.
Aye, thank you, and that passes. And well said, Councilmember Myers, I think should have just let you say it from the beginning, so.
No, you did a great job.
You expressed it well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time in our meeting, we're at the public comments, so this is an opportunity to address the council regarding any ideas, concerns, or on any topic. Please be considerate, everyone in the meeting. Limit your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record. And looks like we have a hand online, so we'll go ahead and start online.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please, yeah, state your name and.
Wonderful. My name is Dr. Peter Beely, and I am happy to be here. I said previously some words that may have rankled some city council members. The, as I recall, the council member talked about his first priority was the city of Ogden employee. And I tried to say that that is a great concern, that the city council's first concern should be protecting the taxpayer. And I don't know how successful I was. Quickly, I'd like to summarize the disparity between a free market enterprise where two Ogden residents come together and one sells eggs perhaps, perhaps obtained illegally on his garden, on his yard in violation of Ogden regulations, but he sells these eggs to his neighbor and they both have a little bit of wealth to gain from this transaction. And this transaction is marked by two free individuals acting freely. In contrast, when the city of Ogden writes a letter to a homeowner saying that there is a $500 fine a day if you do not do such and such, this threat is backed up with the guns of the city of Ogden and the judicial system of the city of Ogden. It's no longer a freely, a free enterprise system. And consequently, the wealth is not created by the government. Wealth is created by the private sector. And so I'm still very offended at the, I don't forget even the name of the council member who made this remark. What I'm saying is pretty basic. You can look at Milton Friedman and Art Laffer and Nobel Laureate and others who affirm this. And consequently, I believe the city of Ogden should be out of the business of having a golf course and really many, many other things. I think the regulations need to be toned down big time to begin to promote free enterprise and between two citizens, instead of this heavy-handed, my way or my gun, thank you very much, I'm the city of Ogden. And I invite any of you to have lunch with me and to discuss the free book available at nices.org called Our Enemy, The State.
Thank you, Dr. Beely. Thank you. We also have another hand online.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, awesome. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Tiano Tonga and I'm an ordinary citizen of Ogden. I just have a question in regards to the new rules and norms that were just adopted. So I, so I'm trying to, I'm a federal, I follow a lot of federal legislation. I'm trying to do my due diligence with my local policy and so I'm fairly new to the whole system. And anyways, yesterday as I was preparing for the city council meeting, I was going through the agenda and through the rules and norms document, the 46-page document, and I was trying to figure out what was actually being adopted and I couldn't. And I was wondering if I could get some clarification. It does say that there are two parts, ad language regarding council member conduct and then one about the minutes being posted. And anyways, I was wondering if I could get some more insight. I don't know if I can even ask this question, but if I could get more insight into what qualifies as, like what does ad language regarding, what does language regarding council member conduct include? And that's the only question that I have.
Thank you.
Or comment.
Thank you, and we'll address questions after all comments have been made, so appreciate that.
Okay.
Any other comments? Oh, we have another hand online. Heath, go ahead, Heath.
Heath Soto, Ogden resident. I wasn't really planning on commenting during public comment, but I was curious how things are progressing with the dinosaur park. Thanks.
Thank you, Heath. Okay, and we have, Peter, you've got your hand raised again. I don't know if that's a separate member in your household that is wanting to talk or?
In truth, it's me on another subject, if that's okay.
No, unfortunately, at this point, well, we just allow for three minutes per person, so I'm certainly welcome to have you come back up at a future meeting. Okay. Any other comments in the room here? Okay, all right, with that, to start with Tiano's question, so the previous section addressed what the council member conduct changes were directed there. And so do you have the page number in the, in that 46-page doc? What page that was?
Page five.
Page five? Page five. So if you read through page five, it'll, that's the section that was added to the rules and norms. So hopefully that answers the question on that.
I think it's the one titled council conduct.
Council member conduct. And it's broken down, again, in the presentation, there are four different sections related to council member conduct in public meetings, council member conduct with administration and council staff, council member conduct while traveling on city business, and council member conduct in unofficial settings. So just some guidance and direction on what we're hoping is maybe a little bit of an elevated standard of excellence on how we, how we work as council members, so.
Chair, it might be nice to mention that while those were the amendments or the additions in this case, when we do vote on these things roughly twice a year, we are approving the whole document. And so it doesn't just, we're not just approving a little bit, we're approving the whole thing again with these additions.
That's a great point. So even though there may have been some changes or even minor changes in that, we are sort of reaffirming the entire document as our playbook or our, how we expect to carry ourselves as council members, so.
And would that, Chair, so would the red line version be in the work session? No, it wasn't there. Okay, I was not sure. Okay, just as an aside.
Yeah, I don't know if the packet had the red line version in that. I'm just, I don't remember. So it would have been two weeks ago. So.
I feel like I read a red line.
And when you look, interestingly, you know, the revisions and approvals, the very end of that document, it lists all of the different revision dates and times. And so you can see it's an active document constantly being looked at and addressed.
Yes, I just confirmed for myself. I apologize. I just looked it up very quickly in the packet of.
August 20th.
Sorry. August 6th. It says under, maybe it's just under, oh yeah, it's under the golden, no, well, I'm not sure. I could be wrong. So I'll look at it more and I'll be able to tell you. I was trying to do it fast.
Was it August 20th?
Maybe it was.
Was that work session? Work session of August 20th was probably when that was, that red line version is. Okay, so Tiana, if you go back to the meeting minutes or the agendas for 2024, in August 20th work session, you'll find the red line version of what was, what was, you know, crossed out and what was added, so. Okay, there was a question about the dinosaur park, so Mayor Nadolski, would you mind giving an update on that?
Yep, I'm actually, thanks for asking the question, Heath. So after, excuse me, after the demolition of the facility, we ran into unexpected utility issues that caused some delay, but the biggest delay was that the park lost their executive director at the time, as well as their maintenance supervisor shortly after demolition. So that set them back for quite some time. The board was operating on a skeleton crew with board members stepping in to fill in roles and they went through a pretty long recruitment process to fill both roles, but they ended up getting a really great executive director, his name's Bo. As soon as he started, I asked to have a meet with, a meeting with him. We've, I've, we've met with him twice at the administration level. And Justin Anderson sits on our board, on the board for the city, has met with him a number of times and is coordinating with the board on the projects moving forward. They've made great progress on the hatchery building as planned and phase, what they're calling Phase One of the playground, which is an all abilities playground inside the park on their east side would be Phase One. The ordering for the supplies has got a pretty long runway, the, but everything's on order. The plan is in hand and ready to go. It looks really great. The really exciting part is the potential for Phase Two for the playground that they are incorporating into the site construction as well, that still has more fundraising to go, but they want to do a much bigger expansion of the all abilities playground. And that's something that has been a priority for me since starting is making sure that we've got an all-inclusive opportunity for kids to play. Since we ran into so many issues with park vandalism throughout the summer, which continues, we had another vandalism report this morning that wasn't great. We're just having a really hard time protecting our assets in the parks without onsite supervision. And so that's when, during the summer, as the vandalism continued to ramp up, we were already looking for opportunities for an all abilities playground, potentially at Lesser Park, but given the investment that would require and the potential for vandalism, I started to get really nervous about that. So knowing what the dinosaur park was contemplating, I thought, I saw a really good opportunity for synergy and for us to maybe leverage some investments with some private donations and fundraising that they've been doing for an all abilities playground. So long story short, we had considerable delays due to staffing issues or changeovers that were anticipated. They got right back on track as soon as they started. I think I met with Bo. If it wasn't his first day, it was definitely his first week to make sure that it picked up where they left off. Phase One for the playground is in play. The hatchery building, as contemplated all along, is on its way and utilities are being prepared and repaired as a result of the, what we found during demo. And I'm really excited about the potential for a Phase Two for an all abilities playground to see what that could entail. Plans for that are still underway, but they will also probably include some portions of the site where demo occurred. So that's the update for now. Did I miss anything or forget anything? Okay, I'm getting the thumbs up from Justin, too. He's intimately involved more than I am, so.
Is there, just a, maybe is there an opportunity for the council to see some of the plans that are, you know, that are being anticipated and worked toward?
Yep, absolutely.
Maybe, I don't know if we look at maybe a work session or even just sharing those out.
I think that they are on, are they on the radar for a, for a report? It would be great, too, to meet the new executive director as well.
Yeah, are they on our schedule for a report? I think we had them earlier in the year, so.
Justin's got an update he can share.
So Justin, do you mind just coming and sharing some additional there?
Not at all. Thank you, Justin, with Public Services. I do represent the city on the dinosaur park board. They have been asked and are preparing to be able to come back and to present to the city council again, like the mayor brought up. They, they lost their director and some others. I do know that they, they will be coming in this fall. They were actually really excited to be able to come in and have you meet Bo and to see the things which they are, they are doing. I do believe that permits for the one hatchery building or the building they're calling the hatchery building should have been paid and pulled today, so that will be going forward. I know also that they are having an issue with the old, the transformer that was formerly on that site, so they're going to need to look to get that replaced as well, so.
Okay, wonderful. We'll work together and see about getting them back, scheduled back in.
Or we should take a field trip.
Or we could do a field trip, that'd be kind of cool.
That would be fun.
Yeah. All right, we'll talk about it.
Not much to see now, but there will be.
Later this week.
Not much to see right now, but they're.
Not much to see right now.
We're trying to change that quickly, but.
Okay, comments from Mayor? Any additional comments that you have?
Probably more than I'm remembering on the top of my mind, but I did want to mention that you probably saw the announcement that we've announced our new airport director, Brian Conde. Brian's set to start on September 23rd. He comes to us from Rifle, Colorado, where he's managed an outstanding facility there. He also spent time at Salt Lake City International, including during the Olympics, had a lot of involvement in preparing that airport for the Olympics and is, the guy's really hungry and excited. He sees huge opportunity for Ogden. He sees a big challenge and he likes to be challenged. But when we, we went through a really extensive interview process and it took a lot longer than any of us wanted, but I feel a lot better about how long it took now that we have Brian because it, to me, it yielded a really great candidate, a really strong opportunity to have really, really strong leadership at the airport. Just to share a few things, when, when I met with him for my mayor's interview, I was amazed at the amount of research he did into Ogden and into the airport, into our ordinance and our code, into the challenges we faced, into all of us as well. He even spent time as a council member in his, in his, in his life, so he understands the pressures that we're all under. He, he sees a pathway forward and he's had experience dealing with a lot of the same dynamics that we have. And one of the things that he said that I really liked, and he said, I said, what are you going to do to build relationships with stakeholders and users at the airport community? He said, "All I can ask is that they let me start from zero. Let me start from zero and then let me earn my trust and earn my credibility." And I really appreciate that. And he's got a long background of having dealt with the same dynamic and getting through it by building trust and building relationships. And I'm really excited to introduce him to Ogden and he starts on the 23rd. Jared Johnson's out of town that day. Jared Johnson's out of town that day, but returns shortly after. And so we're going to hold an open house for him on the 26th. Would love to have you guys attend and participate if you're available for that. Also wanted to report that we, that we did a ton of effort, both us and the university, around making sure that Taylor Avenue is safe for residents and students during the first week of school. I personally went down and rode with our officers for the traffic enforcement portion. It was really eye-opening. Like, I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't sure what to expect, but I've never done a ride along with traffic, and I just want to share a few things that I learned. One, the data going into the day showed that the average speed through there was 21 miles per hour. And we wondered if that would change when school started. And what we saw was an incredible amount of compliance from, from drivers, not 100% however. So Weber State started the day with taking over enforcement, starting at 6:00 a.m. They did not catch a single violator in their shift. And then OPD came and I think we had four in the day. So there is some speeding, but the amount of cars that went through there is quite a few. And I can see why the neighborhood would be concerned about safety. It's a, it's a lot of traffic. I think the volume was eye-opening for me. The other thing that I noticed that, I think that I wouldn't have known unless I went out there, is that the sound of an individual car and the tire noise made me think there was speeding, and I'd be like, oh, there's one. And our cops would shoot it, and it'd be like 23 miles an hour. It's like, what? I thought for sure that one was speeding. And there's a perception that I had that doesn't bear out in the, in the facts. And so I share that perspective because I can see why a neighborhood would be concerned, given the volume and given some of the sounds and sights and stuff they might see. But I wanted to share that we've also, Chief Subi reported on a data analysis post-school opening. So we've got data before and data after, and the, the amount of technical compliance is really impressive. And I've asked President Mortensen, and he is committed to make sure that Weber State continues to follow up on continual presence in enforcement, and we'll do the same as we can. But I asked President Mortensen that we've got other areas with school kids that are far, far worse and more dangerous, that we've got to make sure we use our resources to protect. But just wanted to share that report, that we're doing everything we can. I'm not really interested in just shutting off traffic because people are upset, but I am 100% on board in ensuring a safe environment. That's what we need to do. And we had a great, really great discussion today in leadership about ways that we can encourage more traffic to go through the front of the university instead of coming out the back. More traffic southbound rather than northbound. It looks like students are coming in from the front but leaving in the, in the back. So we're going to look at ways that we can encourage and target communication through the university. It looks like most of that traffic is probably Athletic Department and Health Sciences. So we can be really targeted with communications, and President Mortensen already did that for opening day. And so anyway, those are the efforts that were taken. We'll continue to do that. And it's important that, that people are safe. We, we get that, we're on board.
Interesting. So, so a lot of the traffic was coming from the university then, not necessarily to the university? Is that what I just heard?
Yeah, there was, I mean, there was traffic coming to as well.
Both ways, but the majority, you feel like the flows were coming out of the university?
The, the heavier flow was going out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we just block half the road.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah, the, to give you some context, 8,000 vehicles for an entire week went through that stretch, including both north and south. More than half of them were headed south instead of north. Asking for context from the traffic guys, I was like, that sounds like a ton. And they're like, it's, it's heavy, but it's to be expected, given the use. But it, but I do think that the volume has got to be pretty alarming for the neighborhood. I think that's probably contributing to the perception of safety issues.
What were the numbers prior to school starting? If it was 8,000 that week, do we know what the numbers were prior to the school starting?
Way less.
Like half?
Less than half, I think it was.
Probably less than half.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, school is the.
School's the driving factor.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Appreciate that update. Been kind of wondering how that went.
And we looked back in all of the, I think it was like since, like the last 10 years, I think it was, that he reported, and there hasn't been a single accident or injury on Taylor Avenue specifically. There had been a few on Co-trails Drive, but not on Taylor Avenue, which was also reassuring, thankfully. But it only takes one, of course. We're not, it's not a statistical game when it comes to somebody getting hurt, but in terms of allocating resources, there's a far greater need throughout many, many places in the city. Okay, thanks.
And I appreciate that report. I just have to say, I was almost hit on 25th Street again. I spend a lot of time walking my dogs in my neighborhood, and honestly, I just, I don't know why people are in such a hurry. You know, it's terrifying. You're in the crosswalk, literally, and people will go right in front of you or right behind you or try to go around cars. I mean, yeah, it's really bad. And, you know, those reports of a pedestrian being killed, you know, you're just, it's terrifying. So I can understand why people get concerned because in other areas of the city, yeah, people are not paying attention to people being on crosswalks.
Yeah. Especially with what the state's reporting after their deadliest 100 days campaign, and we had a spike all around the state. Whatever it is that's leading to this, there's, we're certainly seeing the outcome to.
People are so aggravated if you're just trying to walk on, you know, they get like, they're in such a big hurry. You're like, hey, pedestrians have the right of way. And like, also, hit me, see how that will go. Yeah. And that'd be a really good news story.
Well, let's not. We do like it, so let's not do that.
To kill some memory.
We like it, let's not do that.
Yeah. Try it. That'll be really good.
Awesome. Anything else, Mayor? Thank you. Any comments from council members?
Nope. Thanks to the administration for following through on that. It was, that's good, that's good to know and good information, so thank you.
And I just want to say thank you for the work that was done with the Da Vinci Schools and the construction project going along there. And it seems like there was quite a bit of coordination to make sure that was made safe for the students, so. So thank you for that.
That was a collective effort from the team. I mean, even our chief of police was involved, so thanks for recognizing that.
That's awesome. Okay.
Motion adjourned.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hare, second by Vice Chair White to adjourn. This is a voice vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Dave.
The trails aren't safe.